Mayor T. Walt?
Here.
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Here.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Here.
Councilman Holloway?
Here.
Councilman Meza?
Here.
Councilman Thompson?
Here.
Next item tonight is approval of amendments for session minutes of May the 18th, May the 21st, May the 27th, 2020, regular council meeting minutes of May the 26th, 2020. Tell your motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the work session minutes of May the 18th, 21st, 27th, 2020, and the regular council meeting minutes of May the 26th, 2020 as presented.
Second. Motion is second. Now, if we have a roll call please.
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Next item tonight is item five, receipt of petitions of correspondence from the public. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, so we have two. The first one is Bruce Rappaport.
Hi, Bruce Rappaport, 300 West Main Street from Royal County. Mr. Mayor and Town Council, thank you for allowing me to speak. My family and I have been a part of the town for many generations, and I have many concerns about the direction the Town Council has been taking. With respect to the proposed Town EDA from last week's work session, besides unsubstantiated speculation, why is the town planning to go forward with a separate EDA from an already established EDA that serves both the town and county? Has the town even talked to the EDA about serving the town's needs? Why do complete services if it is not necessary? Why pay for two executive directors that will cost town payers even more if it is not necessary? Are you aware that 10 of the 15 properties currently owned and managed by the EDA are located in the town of Front Royal? Are you aware that over two-thirds of the property value of the property owned by the current EDA is also located in town? Specifically, over $21 million of the $31 million owned by the current EDA is located in town. A dual-EDA entity in a small county comprising a population of approximately 40,000 people only result in giving potential business suitors the upper hand in leveraging little ball offers from the town and county in order to entice them to locate here. As a result, we've worked against protecting the community taxpayers' interests. The current EDA has fresh new advisors that includes an experienced EDA director with 11 years of direct experience who developed and directed a multi-faceted strategic plan. Rather than reinvent the wheel, the town needs to work collaboratively with the EDA to strengthen our tax-based revenue stream and capital improvements programs. We're stronger together, and it's time to mend the lawsuits. Regarding the promotion of town tourism, why is the town so adamant and reluctant to assume management responsibility of such a vital industry to our town? It is obvious that the current town manager believes it is not important enough to have our elected officials or employees assume this responsibility, so why delegate it to some yet-to-be-identified third party that will lack the transparency and oversight necessary to ensure that the taxpayer funds are being spent wisely? Regarding weekend street closures, item 7F on your agenda, why is this authority being delegated to a temporary town manager who was supposed to have his contract expire on July 1, 2020? But I understand it has already been extended indefinitely as the Town Council languishes with the selection of a new town manager. Regarding the proposed budget transfers for contingency reserves, item 12F of the agenda, the FY '21 budget transfers for the contingency reserves as proposed would sorely compromise the ability of the town to operate effectively and efficiently. The old adage of robbing from Peter to pay Paul usually doesn't end well. We need to be planning in advance proactively, rainy day fund, rather than having to resort to reactive measures that only hurt other programs. Regarding the 17th Street slip lane sheets, working work session item number three, can the town please clarify whether an island was built into the slip lane design? A well-designed slip lane should include an island in its design in order to slow traffic down and protect pedestrians. The public should be able to see the detailed summary that proffered from sheets as to what the $23,322 includes. If the figure does not include an island, then the taxpayers will end up paying for the difference. Thank you for your consideration of these important issues.
Mr. Mayor, we now have four speakers, so the second one is Linda Allen.
Good evening, Mayor T. Walt, members of Town Council. And say, I am Linda Allen, 15 Madison Street from Royal, with the following comments on the proposed budget. Tourism, like economic development, brings money into the town. These sources of income offset the amount of tax each household pays. Tourism was cut from the budget five months ago without being replaced. Residents can't expect that if tourism efforts are recreated, it will produce lower results for the short season. Tourism inestimations passed is worth at least $200 each household. That is taxes for each household are $200 less because income from tourism offsets taxes. Economic development helps too. The interim town manager cut tourism out as a town function, likely to take money and write to his governor. Excuse me. Some citizens cited consequences of the ITM's budget decisions by noting taxes upon residents can soon rise to cover revenue losses. Only one council member has voted against this budget and collected facts about tourism. We also know the increased revenue in some 2021 budget lines are purification. Would no tourism program an argument against current EDA instead of cooperation, moving infrastructure money around as a contingency fund in case of shortfall in some accounts? Plus, the irony of an economic recovery assistance program from Town Council to local businesses, all instead of meals and lodging taxes as income and foot traffic on East Main Street is helping? You pass congratulations round for your hard work. What is hard about continuing almost intact a January 2021 budget that maintains the same problems it created without evidence of resolutions? Instead of self-congratulations, how about four men and an interim town manager resigning? Clear enough that the budget without understanding action and consequences is not competence to congratulate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Anyone else?
Alyssa Larson? Carson, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr. T. Walt. As you can see from the pictures, I see you and the mayor for a while, and Mr. May, the chairman, of the One Town Board Supervisor standing in the front porch of the Beer Museum, a so-called nonprofit organization. So I also see Mr. Mike Cool, who was running for mayor in November, standing on the sidewalk. From my perspective, this photo opportunity was nothing more than to promote David Downs and his beer party, which consists of getting his good old boys candidates elected for more time in the future. I have to admit, knowing the reputation of Mr. Downs, I was disappointed to see Mr. T. Walt, Mr. May, and Mr. Cool giving credibility to the beer joint and to the beer party. I guess it was a political payoff to the beer party. But as disappointed as I was to see you standing on the front porch of the beer joint, it pales me in disgust at what's going on in the back of the building. As you can see in the pictures, the Beer Museum decided to have a motorcycle ladder and up, and these mostly naked women. Oh, and there is, there was a promotional image supporting their museum. Aren't these just lovely fixtures promoting a museum? So glad to see you, Mr. T. Walt, Mr. May, Mr. Cool, exercising your public service duties promoting such wholesome activities in Front Royal. Mr. T. Walt, is this your idea of the kind of nonprofit business you want to support? Is this the kind of establishment you should be promoting in our town? Especially in our downtown. Mr. T. Walt and Mr. Cool go to the same church and it's the same kind of activities what they appreciate. You and Mr. May, Mr. Cool, you should be ashamed of yourselves. You need to publicly apologize to the little girls, the mothers, the grandmothers, and the women in our community. You should apologize for promoting such seedy activities objectifying women. Isn't it bad enough that the former mayor, Hollis, started habits became front-page news? Now the current mayor and the mayor candidate promoted these kinds of activities in broad daylight? Here's the last question you need to think about. This went on in broad daylight. What went on during the night?
Thank you.
I'll answer that when my time comes if you'd like to say.
I would. I'll be happy. Stevie Hubbard?
Find a little speech to follow up. Um, I just wanted to come up here and thank you guys so much, including Mike McCool and David Downs for supporting our event over the weekend for the police chief, Miguelis. And Mr. Tidrick, you were phenomenal. Thank you for stepping up and helping us get it together. We wanted to tell you how much we appreciate you guys because when we can support things like this as a community, it's just better, safer, and more unified for all of us, and it was a huge success. This is, we will be having future events as well. And this is Samuel Porter. He's going to actually be our director of communications. Go ahead, Sam.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Samuel Porter. I'm a member and resident of Front Royal, Virginia. I'm the director of communications for Front Royal Unites. The mission of Front Royal Unites is to eradicate white supremacy. We believe silence is complicit, and injustices against minority groups must stop. From the courthouse to the schoolhouse, bridges must be built and not burned down. We want to ensure that regardless of your complexion, you are not feared, you feel safe, and you get equal footing. Together, we are united, and together, we are Front Royal. Just this past Friday, on June 5th, 2020, we had a march protest and a rally that attracted between 1,500 and 2,000 people. This was the largest demonstration in our town's history. The efforts of our community to come together are extremely amazing. We'd like to thank the Front Royal Police Department, specifically Chief Miguelis. Thank you a lot. We'd like to thank the town manager, Mr. Tidrick. We really appreciate your partnership, sir. And just thank all of you all for allowing us to show you that we can be peaceful in our mission and making sure that, you know, none of the crazy stuff happens here in our special community. We really appreciate it and look forward to working with you all in the future. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you guys. Have a great day.
Thank you, Ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else?
That's all.
Next item tonight is report, a special committees or town officials or the interim town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm not going to have a lot to report today, but I do have an award I like to give out. I'd like to ask Officer Lawson to come forward, please, and Chief Miguelis. Mr. Mayor, members of council, just so you know, during the COVID-19 time period that we were working in more of a lockdown environment, I received this note regarding Officer Lawson. And on March 20th, he was recognized by his coworkers who advised that Officer Lawson went above and beyond for a citizen. Officer Lawson perceived a particular juvenile to be less fortunate than others and took it upon himself to take up a collection to purchase the juvenile a Christmas present as well as take him out for games and dinner. Officer Lawson went above and beyond in his actions to show compassion to another human being. He hoped it would improve the juvenile's perception of police since there were numerous negative dealings with this individual in the past. So I, this came out back in, back in March and regarding what he did in Chris, during the Christmas time period. I'm really proud to be able to stand here today and present the Star of the Month Award. We take a lot of, a lot of pride inside our town government in recognizing citizens who go above and beyond. And this is exactly the type of award into a, in town employee that I know all of you feel proud about. Officer Lawson, congratulations, and here's your Star of the Month Award. Mr. Mayor, I have a lot more I could say, but I'm not. I think in an effort to preserve some time, we have a work session scheduled, so I'm going to hold my comments to the next, next meeting to catch people up on town activities. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Next item tonight is inquiry request and inquiries of the council members.
I'd like to speak. I wanted to just talk about some of the town county collaboration we've been able to do this past week. We were on the tourism committee earlier this week with county officials and town officials, along with people involved in tourism, like Karen Burner. We're, looks like we're moving forward with the plan, and eventually we want to get it so that we're funding into the joint tourism board, and then they figure out what to do with it. Also wanted to, let's see, so Friday, we did the march, and it's another town, county thing. So the sheriff, Chief Miguelis, Justin Thorne, Cory Morris, Brittany Johnson, Sam Porter, Stevie Hubbard, a bunch of volunteers put everything going, Rachel at pavement cook. And there's just a lot of good things that went on this week where town county is getting together because most people think that, you know, we don't get along, but we've been doing great.
Any more?
Mr. Mayor, I just had a couple of comments. One, I just wanted to say thank you to all the town staff. In the last three months, they're, they've had to make a lot of changes, working from home with their families, cleaning their desks every hour, things like that. And I just want to say I appreciate all that they did and please share it up with the staff. And then the other thing I was going to comment on would be kind of redundant now because Sam and Stevie spoke about it, but I know that I attended the march on Friday night, and exactly what they said, it was just a great opportunity, and I'm so proud of our community and the fact that it was peaceful, and we didn't experience some of the things that other communities have. I know Councilman Holloway and I sat together, and Councilman Thompson actually spoke. And I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to hear that speech on social media, but she did a wonderful job, and I'm very thankful that she represented herself and also as that councilman too. So I look forward to some of these other events in the future that they were alluding to.
Thank you, love. Anyone else?
Well, I would just like to third that. As Lori said, I attended also, and there were some great speakers. And I was really impressed with Stevie's left, I guess, with her daughter. As young as she is, very well-stoked young lady, and I know she's got to be proud of her. And it, everything went off really well. And I know probably most of the citizens heard rumors, this is going to happen, that's going to happen, all these crazy rumors flying around, but it was a really nice, peaceful march and some very, very good speakers. So I look forward to some future activities like that and... Yes, Mr. Mayor. First off, sorry to talk through a mask. So weird, but I am, I am very happy that we're all out here as a full council. Finally, it feels like it's, it's been a while. And so I'm glad to be in front of the public again. Couple of things, Matt and/or BJ, I just wanted to respond to Ms. Allen's comment about defunding tourism. Is there money budgeted in our tourism line item for this coming year's budget? And if so, how much?
I guess there is. The amount?
Two hundred something?
I want to say it was $225,000, but excuse me one second.
Roundabout, it's $225,000 budgeted next year's budget for tourism?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, $225,000.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that because the Town Council did not agree to defund tourism and take the monies out of that account. And I think that's an important clarification. Also, it also feels kind of weird to comment on this, but the presentation I believe from Alyssa just gave, I did see that on social media, and I got to say that I am disappointed that we promote and spend a lot of time and energy promoting our downtown's a family-friendly environment and have worked very hard to bring events such as Family Fun Day to our downtown. And we've had movie theater nights down there. We have a lot of different events to try to bring our children and our lives down to that area to walk around and be patrons of those businesses, only to see, only to see that there is particular activities in some businesses that are not family-friendly and are not appropriate for our downtown, especially in our historic district. And I am disappointed to see that and want to go on record and say that I do not support that and would be embarrassed if I were walking by with my 13-year-old daughter and she were to see that. And I'm disappointed. I'm not sure, the mayor says he's going to comment on this. I'm not sure to the extent that Mr. McCool, Mr. T. Walt, Walt May knew that those events were happening. Nevertheless, the optics are such that this town, this town government was in full support of what was happening down there. And I want to go on the record and say that is not the case from my perspective. So thank you for bringing that to our attention tonight.
Anyone else?
I guess it's my turn. I'll report the mayor. First thing, I'm glad to see us all back here this evening. It's been very hard to run a meeting at home trying to talk up to people. Everybody talking at the same time and all that. But we manage so far, and I'm hoping that this continues so that we can meet here, you know, each, each meeting and at least have the public here that they can speak and whatever they want to talk about. Going back to Saturday, or Friday, really, I, I got a call from, to come down and cut the ribbon at the Beer Museum. Well, you know, we've been trying to promote Main Street. We close in on Friday. We're also keeping it closed through the weekend. And, you know, I cut, I bet, imagine I've cut 25 or 30 ribbons over my tenure as mayor in Front Royal. And if someone calls me, I'll be there, and I will cut the ribbon. And I know that the chamber has called me numerous times to cut ribbons. And I'm sure I'd cut a whole lot more if it wouldn't have been for the pandemic. We were there. Mr. Walt May was there, and Mike McCool was there with his camera, and he took it and put it on only, I don't know if I ever, at least I haven't seen it, but I'm sure I've been there. But going back to the question was, yes, I was there. I don't drink. I don't ever drink a beer while I was there because I don't socialize, beer joints or museums or of that fashion. But I did go, demanded due to the fact I was asked to come and cut a ribbon. So the only would be according to the way we normally do, do things when we open new, new businesses or build old businesses that could begin again. As far as the other pictures that you showed, I have no clue what you're showing. I was not there. I was there for about 30 minutes to maybe 45 minutes. I went in the museum. I looked at the things. I got to tour the museum. Very impressive when I saw the things that were there. Came back out. The ribbon was placed there by a petty showers, and we cut the ribbon, and I left. Now, if I'm being accused of something that I didn't do, that's okay because I've been accused before, but I was there because I was asked to come as mayor of Front Royal, same way that Walt May defended him as well. Because he and I were there for the same reason, to open up a new business, a business that had already been started. And I'm proud that Mr. Downs has got a business. I'm proud that he can run a business. I don't patronize beer joints. But anybody that likes beer, that's fine with me. I have no problem with anyone drinking a beer, but I want to, if I've offended anybody, I apologize. Because I don't think I offended anybody. I think I was doing the mayor's duty as a mayor from Royal. And if there's something he would, he would call again, and there was another opening, I would probably be there as well. So I want to thank you. As far as the ladies that you had the pictures, I have no clue where that was and when it was or whatever. I can tell you for sure, it was not there when I was in present at that, at that building at the museum. So whatever you have, you can criticize me, and you can do whatever you like. But I will apologize if any of your fears of anybody's field now, who I am and what I am. But again, I was there for, because I was named to come. With that, I'll close.
Next item tonight is proposals for additions and deletions to the agenda. See, and then we'll go into our regular council meeting. Item seven is a consent agenda item. We have, let's see, one, two, three, four. Six items this evening. First one is a graded stone, graded stone that were used, grades for asphalt, various treatment chemicals. Urban was not elected a person to the NSVRC resolution for bond repayment. And the fourth, last one was authorization for the town manager to close streets. Tell your motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to reapprove consent agenda items as presented.
Second. Motion is second. Does anybody want to pull one off the floor? Reason? If not, could I have a roll call please?
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item tonight is item eight, council approval ordinance to amend to the Town Code, Section 158-6, pertaining to adoption of references of state motor vehicular laws. Would you read the summary, please?
Council's requested to adopt on its second and final reading an ordinance to amend and reenact Town Code, Section 158-6, pertaining by reference of the state motor vehicular laws as presented. The town must re-adopt Section 158-6 of the Town Code, which legally allows the town to incorporate all the changes to the state code traffic laws that have been made during the year.
Thank you. You have a motion.
Yes, I believe the council adopted on its second and final reading an ordinance to amend, reenact Town Code, Section 158-6, pertaining by reference of the state motor vehicular laws as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Data, could we have a roll call please?
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item tonight, item number nine, council approval and ordinance to amend Chapter 12 and Chapter 175 pertaining to provisions on the removal of certain fees in the town covenant. Tell your motion. Tell your motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to council adopt on its second and final reading an ordinance to amend-
to amend the Town Code, Chapter 12, fees, and Chapter 175 dash 137, fees, charges, and expenses as presented.
Second.
And a motion second on the floor, is any discussion? No discussion, could I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Seelaw?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item tonight is item ten, council approval ordinance to amend the Town Code, Chapter, uh, Chapter 134 pertaining to water sewer rates and system development charges, second reading. Uh, could you read the summary for this one, please?
Council's requested to adopt on its second and final reading and ordinance amendment to Town Code, Chapter 134, pertaining to the increase of sewer service rates and the decrease of system development charges for both sanitary sewer service and water service as presented.
To their motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopt on its second and final reading and ordinance amendment to Town Code, Chapter 134, pertaining to the increase of sewer service rates and the decrease of system development charges for both sanitary sewer service and water service as presented.
Second.
And a motion second, is there, is there any discussion? Here it is, now it's gonna be a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Seelaw?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item, item number eleven, council approval, annual appropriation ordinance for FY 2021 budget, second reading. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council adopt on its second and final reading the town's annual ordinance for the FY 2020, that's 2021 budget effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, proposed.
Your second. Second. Any discussion? Could I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Seelaw?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
No.
Motion carried. All right, number twelve this evening is FY 21 budget transfers for contingency reserves. Could I read, could you read the summary, please?
Council's requested to approve budget transfers for the FY 21 budget to establish contingency funds for potential revenue shortfalls due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Transfers include reduction of medical insurance expenses, establish of HRA line items, removal of merit increases, removal of third-year compensation study pay increases, and reduction of various departmental line items. Contingency funds established from their transfers represent approximately 6% of the total FY 21 budget and are as follows.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve the FY 21 budget transfers as presented.
Your second.
Second.
A motion second, any discussion?
Yes, I, I just wanted to ask a question. Um, some of the things that are renewed, some items that stuck out my mind, like body cameras and overtime for the police department and things like that, if we don't have the revenue shortfall that we thought, is this something we can add back?
Yes, ma'am, that's a great question, and that's exactly what the intent is, that's why we've laid it out this way. Um, specifically as it relates to the body cameras, we're gonna be discussing that in, uh, in our work session. Um, we have, we believe we have approximately $300,000 in this year's budget that we're gonna be able to spend on items because our revenue shortfall was not as dramatic as we planned. So there's gonna be an example of taking money that we set aside in contingency and spending it on various line items. Um, so good, good question. Same thing goes with the merit increases and all these other items.
That was the other, and the three-year compensation study under the school system had done something like that. So the idea is if the money becomes available, then we would go back and add it in based on, okay, thank you, that's all.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I was gonna ask a similar question, but again, just to reiterate because this point was brought up tonight, um, this is planning ahead for what we're already experiencing as revenue shortfalls. Um, I think it's, uh, idealistic to be able to say, uh, well, let's just keep it all and then see what happens. Um, I would love to be able to do so, uh, but the reality is that if money doesn't come in, you have to choose things to sacrifice. And so this is a first round list of all the, uh, items that, that we could do without for a period of time until we're able to either get, uh, state funding to help offset that or until we're able to see where our revenues fall. Uh, you know, every month we're taking, um, every month we review the financial statements to, to see where our revenue's trending. Um, and so I think that this is great work by our town staff in identifying the areas that we could, um, potentially cut back on. I think that in, in a perfect world, it is not the intent of council at all to remove any of these line items, uh, but this gives us the flexibility, uh, to do so. If, if the money comes back in, we'll be able to add back in the different items. And so, again, it, it's, it's great to be able to say, don't do this, don't move it, but if you don't have the money, you can't pay for it anyways. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that as well.
I just wanted to, Chairman, I believe when we talked about this, you said that this was taken past all of the, the directors, right? The different department heads?
Yes, we met with, we met with all the department heads. Um, actually, I think Mr. Wilson, you probably talked to them on two, two or three occasions, and I've talked to them only once.
Right. And our board with the, the different...
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was, you know, frankly, I gotta, I, I'll be very transparent with this, they, all the department heads came in with a very open mind and understood the situation we were in. And, um, in, in a couple cases, uh, the department, the two department heads actually suggested additional cuts that I, that BJ and I felt that we didn't need to take it out of the budget, move it towards contingency, so that we, you know, to their credit, and I'll take my hat off to the department heads, they came in understanding the situation they were in and, um, um, you know, we came to a mutual agreement.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, one more, one more positive comment in this. Um, this was also done in lieu of downsizing departments. These are all the different areas that we could go and, and find, um, um, areas to sacrifice for the time being without sacrificing, um, our employees that way as well. And I think that's a very important distinction.
Anyone else? Mr. President, could I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Seelaw?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is item thirteen of your agenda. Item thirteen is FY, uh, budget amendment and award bid for manhole frames and cover replacements. Could you read the summary, please?
Council is requested to approve the FY 20 budget amendment in the amount of $439,732 in award of bid to Bushell Contracting Corporation for 2020 FR 5, 6, and 7 basin manhole frame and cover replacements in the amount of $439,732. This project will assist the town toward compliance related to the DEQ consent order for INI abatement. Sewer fund reserves will be used for the project at this time, but the town will have the ability to recover funds from a future line deemed beneficial for the town.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve the FY 20 budget amendment in the amount of $439,732 in award bid to Bushell Contracting Corporation for 2020 FR 5, 6, and 7 basin manhole frame and cover replacements in the amount of $439,732.
Second. The motion is second, is there any, any discussion? No discussion, could I have a roll call?
Vice Mayor Seelaw?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, before you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, before you recess or adjourn, I wanted to make one comment before the meeting closes, so it's your, it's your pleasure.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I didn't know that item, uh, if item five was meant, or item seven F, the, uh, authorization to close streets was gonna get approved or modified, so I didn't make these comments, uh, prior to, during my opening remarks. Um, as it, as it appears now, Mr. Mayor, what will happen this weekend, uh, the town of Front Royal, I will direct the closure of Main Street and Kid Lane as we have the last three weekends. And, um, considering that to be the case, um, I really, I think town council really needs to, um, um, send out a warm thank you to, uh, Willy, Willie Huck and Family Fun Day. Um, you know, Willie stepped up on a phone call after Monday night meeting. The next morning, I called Mr. Huck and said, would you consider, um, closing Main Street and helping organize it? Uh, that first weekend, he and his wife and his team probably loaded up seventy-five tables on their own, they got chairs, they went out and got tents, all much of it on a volunteer basis. Um, you know, listening to, uh, various people talking about the, the great protests this weekend and how the town and the county would come together, there's an example, in my opinion, of a, of a, of a citizen, a business owner stepping up. You know, he didn't necessarily sell a lot more ice cream per se, but he wanted to step up and help his fellow business owners on Main Street. Um, the second weekend, uh, town, the town crews, town staff, um, they're helping to load up chairs and, and, um, so as this morphs the next few weeks, I envision, um, you know, deferring more of that workload to the business owners and let them get their own tables and chairs and set it up the way they want. But from all accounts, um, not only has it been a, a good success, I believe, but I, I do believe you see, uh, Mr. Huck, um, and I think a resolution would be in order here in the near future, thanking him for, um, you know, his volunteers on stepping up to do this.
Mr. Tiedrich, I agree, I think that's gonna be a good, good gesture to go into a resolution.
Mr. Mayor? You know, I should have said something earlier, I should have mentioned, told us often, we just spoke about it, but, um, I, I frequently went down there since this has been closed. Um, this past Sunday, I went down, my wife and I, and, uh, we spoke to the, some shop owners, spoke to William. Um, the only thing they would like to see done, um, there's been a lot of, I guess, skateboarders, bicycles up and down the street, the sidewalks, um, that was one of the complaints they had. Um, and also that the, we have the streets closed, but, uh, they're afraid that a lot of people from out of town, they don't realize that the stores are open. So maybe we could do some signage, um, at each in the Main Street, letting, you know, our out-of-counters know that, hey, you know, down count's open, just not to traffic.
Can we work on that? Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just wanna thank William, yeah, and I know I've thanked him, you know, numerous times, but, uh, I, I wanna do it, uh, again tonight and just say, William, you're, you're a tremendous asset to, to this community and what you do. And, uh, you're...
Sir, I'll second you.
Okay, that concludes our minute.
Thank you. Sorry. Why isn't it, thank Willie, and also to help you out, Friday was the ribbon cutting and the Bikini Girls were there on Saturday, so Jean was not there when that happened.
Very surprising. Thank you. Is there anything else? Do I hear a motion, adjourned?
Sir.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.